And... At this time, I would ask everyone to rise and remove your caps for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, at this time, we have, under public comments, anyone may address the board on matters which are on the agenda. You may go to the podium, state your name, and home address. This would be if you have comments on an issue. If you have a... An item on the agenda, it doesn't mean you get to move it up. So... But if anybody has any comments on matters that are on the agenda, please feel free to go to the podium, state your name, and home address. We put this in, this is relatively new, so that if somebody wanted to make a comment on something that may come up, it didn't make sense for us to take action and then have people make comments at the end of the meeting. So we have two sessions now of public comment. Okay, seeing none, we will go to... I do have a proclamation, and I will read that. And do you have that? I prefer to read off the paper, if you don't mind.
I know you do.
Thank you. All right, and RRS, you're here for the proclamation. Thank you for being here. I'll read the proclamation into the record. This is Days of Peace and Nonviolence, whereas the issue of peace embraces the deepest hopes of all peoples and remains humanity's guiding inspiration. In 1981, the United Nations proclaimed the International Day of Peace "be," and I'm quoting, "devoted to commemorating and strengthening the ideals of peace both within and among all nations and peoples," end quote. And whereas, the United Nations expanded the observance of the International Day of Peace in 2001 to include the call for a day of global ceasefire and nonviolence, and invited all nations and people to honor a cessation of hostilities for the duration of the Day of Peace. And whereas, there is growing support within our nation for the observance of the International Day of Peace, including a group of Dubuque area residents, inviting all to create a culture of peace by participating in a countywide celebration from Tuesday, 17 September to Sunday, 29 September, focusing on nonviolent conflict resolution. And whereas, local and global violence impels all citizens to work toward converting humanity's noblest aspirations for world peace into a practical reality. It is possible to see our community and world turn from violent to nonviolent solutions within our lifetimes. And whereas, the Dubuque Day of Peace organizing committees, 2019 focus will be on women and peace, many voices, many languages, with a performance by Magdalena Gomez on Sunday, September 22, 6:30 PM, in the Alumni Campus Center at Lawrence College. Now therefore, the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of the staff and citizens of Dubuque County, do hereby recognize the International Day of Peace and proclaim September 17 through 29 as Days of Peace and Nonviolence in Dubuque County, Iowa, and urge residents to further affirm a vision of our world at peace by fostering cooperation between individuals, organizations, and nations. Proclamation adopted the ninth day of September 2019, Dubuque County Board of Supervisors. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve proclamation.
And I'll second that. Motion made and seconded to approve the proclamation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried. RRS, would you have a few words?
Aye. RRS, your... September 17th to 29th, the microphone just came on, and I hope to see supervisors or anyone who wants to come at some of the events. They're taking place in the city, and then we also have some events out in the county, for example, at the Catholic Worker Farm and places like that. So they're all at dbqdayofpeace.org or our Facebook page, just Dubuque Day of Peace.
Okay, thank you. All right, and do we want to hold this for Supervisor Wickham's signature? Or can we... Okay. All right. Maybe we can get a picture.
All right.
Thank you for doing this.
Yeah, thank you for having us on the agenda for you.
Somebody has to bring these forward, so it's almost...
Do you want to come up? Supervisor McDonough and I will... Okay. And I'm going to get rid of... I'll do this.
Okay, we'll hold it at that.
Do you want to get right... Us right in front of the flags?
Yeah, if you might scoot over just a little bit. Those are good.
Thank you.
We signed it. Okay. Do we need one with original for our records? Okay. All right. Okay, we have... The next item on the agenda would be the item number two, approval of minutes of the meeting of August 26, 2019. I did have correction under the August 26 minutes for the item that's... We were discussing the Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Center. The minutes, I believe, need to be corrected. The minutes say that Baker attended the meeting for Ann, but what the discussion was, was that I offered to, but ultimately Ann's schedule changed back, and she was able to attend. And then the security issues were raised at the courthouse security committee meeting regarding transporters. So I have a little note on it, Mary, I can give you, and if you agree that that's... Because I believe the minutes indicated that I attended, and I did not.
Motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Okay. Then I had... Let's see. Yeah, that was it. Okay, I'll second that. Motion to approve the minutes as amended. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried. All right. We'll go to consent items. And I don't see any. Okay? And also, that was number three, consent items. There aren't none. Number four, procurement procedures. I don't believe we have any of those either. So we go to item number five on the agenda, proof of publication for public hearing.
Make a motion to approve the proof of publication?
And I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried, two to zero. All right, next item is item number 5B, and this is a public hearing. Amendment to zoning ordinance. First case is case number ZC number 08-23-19, William Cropfall and Matthew and Kimberly Cropfall, A1 agricultural to R3 single-family residential. And Tammy, I'll turn it over to you. Tammy Henry, our interim zoning administrator.
Good morning. The applicants are requesting a zone from A1 agricultural to R3 single-family residential, .84 of an acre, to get a non-conforming property into conformity to allow for a future garage. The property located .02 miles west of the city of Dyersville along Old Castle Road is legally described as lot 2 of 1 of 1 of 1 of the northwest of the southwest, Section 5, T88 North, R2W Dodge Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by Matthew and Kimberly Craftle and William Craftle. Zoning in the area includes A1 agricultural to the north, the south, the east, and the west, R2 single-family residential to the southeast, R3 single-family residential to the west and to the southeast. The R2 single-family residential to the southeast on zoning case number 0618 of 06 was to create a residential subdivision. The R3 single-family residential to the west on zoning case number 9013 of 81 was to allow for a single-family home. There are no special use permits attached to this property, and there are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. Twelve rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners, and the city of Dyersville was notified. Comprehensive Plan Chapter 9 Agriculture and Natural Resources, Page 134, Objective 3.1, and Chapter 8 Housing, Page 122, Objective 12.7 may apply to this case. So this piece of land here has never... It's been zoned A1, and I can show you, there's a bunch of non-conforming zoning in that area. So these were lots that were created before our agricultural rules have changed through the years. And all they're trying to do is eventually come in and build a garage, and they wouldn't be able to do that because of the setbacks. If we rezoned them to the R3, they eventually would be able to go ahead and be able to add that garage with those and meet those setbacks. So it's really about just getting a non-conforming property in so that they can build a garage onto this property.
Seems that the zoning board looked at it and made a unanimous approval?
Yes.
Is there any concern that there were only four board members there? I understand that's a quorum, but...
No.
The fact that it was four to zero... If it was three to one, I might think differently, because if the other three that weren't there voted against it, you know... But in this case, being unanimous, I think I'm comfortable with that.
And what we tried to do here, they could have went in and asked for a special use permit and a variance. What we tried to do is make this more friendly for them and be able to use this property as it's actually being used. It's not being used as agricultural. So we have these come up occasionally. It's the best... It's in the best interest of the homeowner that we get them into conformity.
Make a motion to approve or to open the public hearing?
Okay, there's a motion, and I second it, to open the public hearing. All in favor of opening the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so the public hearing is open. If you would like to speak on this matter, please approach the podium and give your name and address for the record.
And if you want.
Does not appear that anyone wants to speak, so a motion to close would be in order.
Close the public hearing?
And I second that. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I just have one question, Tammy. The other... This isn't going to look like spot zoning...
No.
Because there's other...
That's right. Because in the area, there is... That's why we brought up the other zonings in the area.
Yeah.
And that's because it is not considered spot zoning.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Make a motion to approve the zoning request from A1 to R3?
And I second that. Want to do the second part? We need a second motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Make a motion to approve the... To suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage in two prior meetings.
And I second that. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Make a motion that the amendment be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map, and that the auditor be directed to arrange for publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended and the official county newspapers as required by law.
And I second that. And is there any discussion on the final motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried, two to zero. All right. Our next case is case 5B2, and the case number is ZC number 08-24-19, David and Rebecca Lancing and Jeanette Bell, A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential. And again, we'll turn it over to our interim zoning administrator, Tammy Henry.
The applicants are requesting a zone from A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential, one acre, to separate the existing home from the farm buildings to allow their daughter to purchase the home and assist in the farming operation. The property is located 1.45 miles northeast of the city of Worthington and is legally described as lot 2 of 2 of 4 of the west half of the northeast, lot 3 of the west half of the northeast, the south 50 feet of lot 2 of the west half of the northeast, the north 50 feet of lot 2 of the west half of the northeast, all in Section 28, T88 North, R2W Dodge Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. This property is owned by David and Rebecca Lancing and Jeanette Bell. Zoning in the area includes A1 agricultural to the north, the south, the east, and the west, A2 agricultural residential to the north. The A2 agricultural residential to the north on zoning case number 0621 of 16 was to rezone one acre around the existing farm home for estate purposes. There are no special use permits attached to this property. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. Two rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners, and the city of Worthington was notified. Comprehensive Plan Chapter 9 Agriculture and Natural Resources, Page 134, Objective 3.1, and Chapter 8 Housing, Page 122, Objective 12.7 may apply to this case. So I had received a phone call, and the family, the daughter and her husband are going to be coming in and helping take over a lot of the farm in the future. And so they thought it was best to go ahead and get her out to the farm. So that's what this piece that you're seeing is here, is just around the house itself. Now, there was a lot of complications when they gave me a phone call, and I'll show you here. The reason that Jeanette Bell is involved in this as well is because a bunch of this property belonged to Jeanette Bell. As you can see here, half of this house was in Jeanette Bell's. So the plating somewhere along the line with the railroad and everything, this house had been sold several times. There'd been several things that happened, and nobody knew it until they called. And so we're here to, first of all, do the rezoning and down the road here with a plat to correct some problems, okay? And there is family members here to speak about it.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Tammy, otherwise...
This is strange. This is very strange.
Very interesting when I got the phone call, because when I looked at it, she was like, oh, can we just do this and that? And I said, oh, no, you've got to come see this mess, I said. So we're in fixing... Trying to fix a lot of things here.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second. All in favor of opening the public hearing signify by saying aye. Aye. Carried, two to zero. And at this time, the public hearing in this matter is open. If you wish to speak on this matter, please approach the podium and give your name and address for the record.
My name is David Lancing from Worthington, Iowa. I own the property, and we're all, like she said, we want to bring our daughter and son along to the operation. All we're trying to do is clean up a mess. The Jeanette Bell's farm was sold over the last 30 years, probably five times, and they never caught it. So this time, we thought we'd... And Tom and Jeanette are getting up there in age, that we thought we'd get it done before something happens to them and get it all taken care of, make it all legal, and make it easy for the next guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on this matter? The public hearing is open.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
And I'll second it. Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carried. This kind of reminds me of the case in New Vienna. Similar.
Yep.
I think it's important to get it cleaned up before someone does pass.
Yes.
Before you're looking at an estate. And this also was a unanimous vote?
And the Lancings own several hundred acres that they farm.
I'll make a motion to... Excuse me, to approve the rezoning.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carried, two to zero. And I'll make a motion that the amendment be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carried, two to zero. Hopefully, the mess is cleaned up. You're welcome. All right. Next item on the agenda is item number six, approval of plats. 6A is a resolution, preliminary plat of Haven Ridge First Edition, Section 27, Center Township. And again, we'll go to Tammy Henry, our interim zoning administrator.
Okay, all right. So this property is owned by Josta LLC and is located about .60 miles north of the city of Centaya at the corner of Humke Road and Sundown Road. The property is owned R2 single-family residential with a total of 8.175 acres surveyed. The purpose of this plat is to create a residential subdivision. The survey creates five lots. Lot 1 through lot 5 are a minimum of one acre in size and will be sold for residential homes. Each lot shall have its own individual septic system. Water shall be supplied by one shared well. There was a rezoning of this property on zoning case number 1232 of 17 from R1 Road Residential to R2 Single Family Residential. Lot 1 through 5 have an approved residential entrance permit number 19-31 off of Humke Road. The survey creates a private road with a 66-foot wide right-of-way easement and with a 20-foot road top and a 50-foot radius cul-de-sac. There will be a 22-foot water and utility easement for lots 2, 3, and 4, and a 15-foot water and utility easements for lot 5 and lot 1. The final plat will require approved engineered road plan, stormwater calculations, with plans showing ill filtration of 1 and 1/4 rainfall for the entire subdivision, as well as a post-construction water quality rates. The plat will also require grading plans and erosion control measures, covenants, address, well, and septic maintenance, road and stormwater best management practices, and maintenance by the association. This is a preliminary plat and has been reviewed by myself as the plat's officer, and I respectfully recommend approval. So this is preliminary. So we're at the beginning stages of it. And the reason it was known as Haven Ridge and then FKA Abbott Place, they had changed the names in... So they originally came in with this preliminary plat being Abbott Place. They have changed the name of it. So that's why you're seeing the difference. So the final plat will be Haven Ridge First Edition. And the intention is to have the five lots. And if you recall, that was an entrance that was, at one point, talked about being coming off of Sundown Road, and then you ended up approving it up here off of Humke Road. It is a small subdivision. They're working with Eric Schmalkel. They're working with Anthony and myself to get to the next stage of having this finished. So they'll go through here for preliminary. They've already been through the zoning board. Then they'll go back to the zoning board once they get their final plat completed. They don't seem to think there's going to be many changes here now coming up. So what you're seeing is pretty much probably what we're going to see.
Tammy, this is in the vicinity of another subdivision, is it not?
Yeah. It's right next to... So here's the other subdivision it's next to. And so there was concern about runoff already into this neighborhood. So they're working closely with Eric to make sure they're putting in the proper systems to make sure that they don't have any other additional issues.
And the R1 to R2 change will help with shorter driveways and less runoff?
It was always... They could always build a subdivision here. When they did the rezoning, they did that for the purpose of that.
Right.
And actually, when that rezoning was done, it was by a different ownership, and then this has been sold since.
Okay. All right.
The entrance is not... I know we're not talking about entrance today, but it is not off Sundown Road, correct?
No, it is not. It's off Humke Road. We did not allow it to come off Sundown Road.
Make a motion to approve the preliminary plat?
I'll second it. Motion made and seconded to approve the preliminary plat of Haven Ridge First Edition, Section 27, Center Township. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried, two to zero.
Welcome.
All right, 6B resolution, final plat of Lancing Bell Acres, Section 28 Dodge Township. And again, we'll go to Tammy Henry.
Okay. The property is owned by David and Rebecca Lancing and Jeanette Bell, and it's located 1.45 miles northeast of the city of Worthington along Fortman Road. The property is owned A1 agricultural with a total of 160.58 acres surveyed. The purpose of this plat is to clean up the property lines and survey around the existing farm home for estate purposes. The survey creates four lots. Lot 1 is a total of 72.04 acres surveyed, and it will be owned by David and Rebecca Lancing and remain in agricultural use. Lot 2 will have a total of 55.92 acres surveyed, and it will be owned by Jeanette Bell and remain in agricultural use. Lot 3 is a total of 31.47 acres surveyed with farm buildings, and it will be owned by David and Rebecca Lancing and remain in agricultural use. Lot 4 will have a total of 1.15 acres with a home, and it will be sold to the Lancing's daughter. Lot 1 will use an existing field entrance off of Fortman Road, and Lot 2 will have a 33-foot access easement across Lot 4 of Fortman Road. Lot 3 will have a 33-foot access easement off an existing field entrance off of Fortman Road, and Lot 4 will use an existing residential access off of Fortman Road. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat. There are no liens or mortgages on the property. Some signatures have... Were delayed. County Treasurer, June 7, 2019. County Assessor, June 7, 2019. This plat has been reviewed by myself as plat's officer and has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. So as you recall, we had all of these other lines going through, so I'll show you here. So what we're doing is correcting all of that. So now it's going to come down to where... This is the little house, and then this will be one. So we've taken away that mess out there. And they have easements, and they have agreements. So it's all been in play. Now they've just cleaned it up. This will just clean it up legally.
Make a motion to approve the resolution?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carried, two to zero.
Chairman Baker, could I ask you to sign that for him? He would like to go get it recorded.
Why don't we take a brief...
Make a brief... Motion to make a brief recess?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll bring my pen, Mary. Here. Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is item seven, which is action items. And on these, the board may approve, deny, or table any action item. So we will... So 7A is a resolution regarding the appointment of deputies, assistants, and clerks. So I would defer to Dawn Sherman, our Human Resources Manager.
I have reviewed these and would recommend approval.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
For Sunny Crest, we have an LPN. Is that a new person, or is this just going back to re... To make a change?
I would have to check on that. Are you asking if it is a new employee or if it's somebody moving from like a full-time to a part-time?
Yeah, it's a licensed practical nurse, and it's always nice to see those.
Yes.
And I know that Sunny Crest needs nursing. And I know that Sunny Crest needs nursing. We have nursing physicians open, so... But the date approved is April 4th. So, if you don't know, it's just... I can follow up with Chris Kirsch myself.
I can check with her. I should be able to find that out.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carry two to zero. Seven B, resolution approving the purchase of 2019 Dodge Caravan SXT from Talky Motors. I guess I would ask Randy Renison, our Department of Veterans Affairs Director, to come forward to discuss this. This was an item that was tabled from the previous meeting. And so, we have... The issue was, we had a quote from two different dealerships, and the recommendation, Randy, was to take the more expensive bid, but there were some explanations involved in that. So, I'll turn it over to you to rationalize the recommendation.
Okay. I... When this first... The two bids actually came out, we had the commission meeting. And so, the three commissioners kind of looked at both Dodge Caravan through Talky and then the other one from Turpin. What they were kind of hesitant with the Turpin one was the availability wasn't. They said if available. Another thing they liked about the XXT was the push-button door. So, if we get a veteran that's an older veteran in there, it's a lot easier to just push the button and close it, along with hands-free capabilities. Instead of have to wear... Like, I don't have my hearing aids in today, and so that way I don't have to take out my hearing aids and put in the actual Bluetooth system. And plus, the reason they also wanted the XXT was because the sticker price was $35,000, but they're going to reduce it down to $26,000. So... And plus, it's available along with some of the other safety features, a little bit more room in case we get a couple of veterans in there that might have a walker or a wheelchair. Also, in the back was tinted windows in case we have to pick someone up that has the... Oh, I can't think what it's called, but for your eyes dilated.
Yeah.
And so, that way, it kind of protects them and stuff. Even though we did hear that from the director from Iowa City that they might be bringing optical van here to Dubuque. So, they're trying to make that. So, along with like an audiology van. So... But that's what the commissioners were kind of looking at. But they said that, you know, any... Whatever way you guys go, they're more than willing to get rid of the 150,000-mile Ford Explorer. That way, we don't break down.
Right. And what are your thoughts on...
Well, we don't make a purchase like this very often for veterans, actually for any of our departments. So, I'd like to make sure that it has the equipment that it needs to best function for the folks who are going to ride in it. You know, the question was that it was the more expensive vehicle. I think you've explained, especially when we're looking at availability and those features. Or if you consider those features to be... Commissioners are fine with this purchase. I'd like to see it go forward.
I'm with you. I actually attended the meeting last week and got to hear their discussion firsthand. And I'm satisfied that the additional equipment will benefit our Dubuque County veterans. I think the push-button, I think as Randy described, the push-button door will be an asset for some of our more aged veterans or more immobile veterans. And I think the tinted glass could come into play, and it sounds like it has a little more room. I did have a question, Randy. What... And maybe for Stella as well. What's the life expectancy of this van? The amount of money is, I think it's about $4,000 difference, but what time period would we spread that? Or is it one year, five years? Okay. And in the past, Randy, the veterans have gotten hand-me-downs from the Sheriff's Department. Is that not correct?
Well, we only... That just happened, I want to say, three years ago?
Yeah. Well, you didn't even have a...
We didn't have a vehicle.
Right.
So...
Okay. And we'll be transporting our... It'll be used for staff, but also we'll be transporting veterans with us.
Right. Veterans from here. The reason with the remote control start is because right now, our county vehicle's parked over there by the... Across the way. So, and especially with last year with the cold winter, we can just kind of maybe hit started from the building to kind of warm it up. And the same with the Iowa City, the parking ramp, we should be able to warm up the vehicle a little bit quicker for the veterans down there.
I... My feeling is, I think you've substantiated the value in going with the, in this case, the higher bid. And I'll go to Dawn. I don't believe that... I think this... To take the higher bid with the explanation, is that in violation of any of our procedures or policies? Okay. All right.
Motion to approve the resolution approving the purchase of a 2019 Dodge Caravan.
I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carry.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item up is item seven C, a resolution approving partial release of mortgage in the... In Henry County for Jump Start Federal Housing Rehabilitation Payment Program.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay. Motion is made. I'll second it. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carry two to zero. Item seven D, resolution approve the necessary right-of-way documents for the exiting roadway on Ridgeway... Excuse me. Ridgeview Drive.
It probably should be existing roadway.
Yeah, I was... It looks like it's missing in a letter, so existing.
Yep. So, this is what we discussed in the work session for Ridgeview Drive. There's a cul-de-sac piece that we're purchasing, and just a little bit... A little more ground around that to be able to create a turnaround at some point. This is for 2.245 acres, and because the landlord is working with us to eventually donate the... Or dedicate the easement to the public, we're purchasing it for a dollar is what the purchase agreement is for.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carry two to zero. Seven E is a resolution approving the county engineer entrance permit appeal responsibilities.
Motion to table.
Okay.
Without Supervisor Wickham here...
I understand. And I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carry two to zero to table.
Bring that back maybe just in two weeks.
Yep. All right. Seven F is a resolution to approve federal aid SWAP swap funding agreement number six dash 19, HBP dash SWAP dash 024 for project BROS dash SWAP dash C031106 dash FE dash 31 on Simon Road. We'll defer to county engineer Anthony Barzett on this.
This would be one of our RPA-programmed bridge replacements. This is on Simon Road, just off of Highway 151. It's a load-rated bridge, and it's definitely in need of a replacement. So, this would be the funding agreement. Formerly, it was always a federal aid funding agreement. Now, it's a federal aid slash swap funding agreement. So, we are swapping our federal aid dollars from the RPA program for the state's foreign market dollars. That's why it's called swap. So, it's strictly just working through our foreign market account, essentially. So, it's 100% funded with the swap program. The estimated cost of this bridge is $750,000. It's about a 200-long bridge replacement we're looking at.
Any questions for Anthony?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carry two to zero. Seven G is a resolution to approve plans and specifications for the bridge replacement project on Simon Road, project BROS dash SWAP dash C031106 dash FE dash 31. And so, this is the seven G resolution. Again, we'll defer to Anthony on this.
Okay. This will be the final set of plans for the bridge replacement on Simon Road. This is for a 201-foot, four-inch by 30-foot wide concrete beam bridge. This is being let through the DOT and scheduled for a letting date of December 17th, 2019. Yeah, that's about it.
Okay. Will we have electronic signatures for these, or for the state for DOT?
Not for this. Not for this, no.
All right.
When we get to the contract time, that's when you do all that.
Okay.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carry two to zero. Seven H is a resolution approving flood control allocation to fire departments. Seven H. And...
Is there anyone who can give any context on this? I just... It wasn't something I'd not seen before, so...
I think this is a percentage. They're getting a... Each of these fire departments are getting a third of the allocation, $1,409.93 for the fire district breakdown. The original amount of $42,297.94, 65% goes to the school district, 25% to secondary roads, and 10% to the fire district. And then, from the fire district, the affected fire departments, it looks like, was City of Dubuque Fire Department, Key West Fire Department, and Cheryl Fire Department for $1,499.3.
I understand that. I guess what my question was is, how were those fire departments determined? Or is it because they were the affected fire departments? Maybe that's just understood somehow? I guess that was the nature of my question. Maybe there's nothing we get to do. Maybe there's no discretion. I don't know. Mary, do you have any information?
These fire departments are...
Okay. So, we know those were the fire departments that needed to be reimbursed.
We're doing this...
And there's some of our fire departments in discussion. When we had the... In 2017, when we had the 200-year events within a week of each other, is when this... We went with giving road signs, road closed signs to our fire departments. And Asbury and Cheryl needed more of those because they have more waterways running through their areas. Denise, I don't know if you have any comments on this?
Well, another question I would have is, who determines... I understand that the percentage is set by, you know, Chapter 467B, but who determines which of the subdivision... Which of the fire departments are selected? And I guess that's... Is there a committee? That's what I'm asking for.
I will double-check. My office used to do this, and then since the treasurer gets the funds, the treasurer has taken over doing this resolution. If I remember correctly, this is pilot money, which is payment in lieu of taxes. And it comes from the feds. It is for the federal land along the river, for the Lock and Dam, et cetera. And so, it is divvied up to the fire departments that are affected along the river, and that's how it was decided. Unless it has changed in the last few years, I believe that's the way it was when my office still did it.
So, this isn't to do with like an event?
No. This is standard. This is the feds giving us some money in lieu of the fact that federal land is not taxed.
Okay. So, then I have more questions. So, maybe we'll just motion to table, and then whoever can... Key West Fire Department wouldn't be impacted, I don't think, by a flood?
No, it's not a flood. It's because they have land along the river.
They cover down to...
They cover all the way down to Massey. They cover the whole southeastern part of the county.
And then, same thing with Cheryl. They cover all the way down to the river.
They go... Yeah. Yeah.
Including John Deere.
Right. Yeah.
Right. Key West... Or Cheryl, their biggest client is John Deere Dubuque Works.
But, I mean, they have, you know, stuff... They... Their federal Corps... Army Corps of Engineer lands all up and down the river. And so, this is money that is given to these fire departments because the land is in their area.
But it looks like 30... A high $38,000 goes to the county itself. Is that right?
I haven't looked at the... I don't have a copy of the resolution, so I'm not...
It looks like $10,000 went to... $10,500 went to secondary roads. So, Dubuque, right? That's what it says. And then, $27,500 to the school district. So... And I'm not sure.
And again, the school district is affected by...
Right.
...property that the federal government is not paying taxes on. And then, obviously, we would have some of that property also.
Okay.
And this resolution came from the treasurer's office?
Yes, but it's a standard resolution.
I guess it's just because I knew, so I have a motion to table. It doesn't have a time on it.
Okay. I'll second it. Motion to table and second it. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carry two to zero. Okay. Seven I, resolution to approve FY20 IDPH Substance Abuse Prevention Services Contract And this is a $10,000 grant covering July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020.
And this is the grant that we're going to look at in the early spring with the Board of Health. I make a motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carry two to zero. Next item on the agenda is item number eight. And we have communications, and this is correspondence that the board will receive and file without taking action. Eight A is a manure management plan, annual updates. Gary Burkle, number 70448. Ryder Dairy Incorporated, number 65724. And Gary Wessels, number 58865. And then, item B, eight B, from the Commissioner of Elections regarding certified election registration administrator achievement. I would like to make a comment.
I'll make a motion to receive and file...
Okay.
...communications regarding the manure plan updates.
Okay. Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now, we have the certified election registration administrator designation achieved by Jenny Hillary. So, Denise, do you want to comment on this?
Get in here. We never get to share good news.
What... Do you want me to...
I'd like to have Jenny step in.
Oh, okay. This was a... This is a multi-year course work that Jenny has taken. Caused her to be away from her family, et cetera. So, I wanted to cause... I wanted to call attention to it, not only to the board members, but also to the members of Dubuque County, especially the voters in Dubuque County. There are probably... I think I put in here, there's 26 other Iowans who have this designation. It's a national program. Yes. And so, I wanted to call to your attention the fact that we now have a certified election registration administrator in the county to oversee our elections.
Yes, ma'am. I know you're a young mom, and I think that's really cool that you did this while you were juggling all the tremendous, amazing things that you're doing. When I saw this, I actually thought of the Dubuque County Rising Stars. You know, it's the time where the chamber is talking about rising stars in the community. And I just thank you for being willing to do all this extra that isn't required, so...
Great work, Jenny. Thank you.
And that's that.
Beach?
Do you have some prepared remarks for us?
Do you want to talk about some of the time that you spent on this? I mean, and how long this was a multi-year learning process for you? And you're going to pass your wisdom on to Dubuque County. And you know, now with the, you know, our, the security of our elections being questioned, I guess, and, and certain foreign adversaries trying to attack our free election process, having, you know, having this designation, to me, makes, makes me feel better. And I'm sure the citizens of Dubuque County appreciate it as well. But I don't know if you have any comments, Jenny? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, so.
No, that's okay. I, I had started back in 2016, and it's a professional program, and everyone takes it very seriously when you're there. You know, you're going to other states, it's taught by Auburn professors, and they're long, long weeks, and they're full classes, and you, you start, even go on Saturday and Sunday. So, no, it was a time commitment. I thought it was very, though, useful, and I'm grateful for you letting me go and have that opportunity. You meet a lot of good counterparts in other states and see how other states do stuff. And it, it is very good to have the election community together there to talk about cybersecurity and, and have, you know, different speakers like DHS and Matt Masterson come and talk to us. And it was a great experience. Sorry, you kind of put me on the spot.
And I, I wanted to, I, I was on, I happened, the timing of this was, I was on Cindy Coleman's Voices of the Tristates radio program, and I had talked to Denise, so I was able to get this out there to that audience. And, but one of the comments that I made, and that I truly believe, is that we have been blessed with people with integrity in the election process. And I'm talking about county auditor Dolan, former deputy of elections, Tom O'Neal, and now Jenny Hillary in that role. And I think you achieving this designation is a tribute to, to, to all the history, I guess, of this, and, and also contributes to the future of having Dubuque County elections be run properly and securely.
Yep, we take our job.
And I thank you for that.
Thank you. Yep, we take our job very serious, and we're committed to running fair, smooth elections, so.
And I can say that because I came, I went through my first election, I came up on the short end of a recount, and I was very pleased with the process, so.
And I, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And I guess just looking more broadly, as I grow into the role of supervisor, I find that we have staff that go beyond what we're asking them to do. And it would be nice if our elected officials, and thank you Deputy Auditor Dolan for bringing this, but it would be nice to celebrate those achievements, so that people are aware that in the county at large, we really do have folks working tirelessly and beyond what's expected. We should be celebrating that and drawing attention to that. So thank you for bringing that before us.
I'll make a motion to receive and file the communication regarding, from the commissioner of elections regarding the certified election registration administrator achievement.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carrie.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Jenny. All right. Next up is agenda item number nine, which is appointments. And we have nine A one, which is library district, board of trustees, one vacancy for an unexpired term ending June 30, 2021, must reside within the unincorporated area of Dubuque County. And Dawn, have you been working on this?
Yep, I should have brought it up.
And this is application of Kristen L. Smith from.
Couldn't have a much better qualified person.
Right. That's what I was thinking. So, and how long has this, the application period been open? Do we know? Okay, all right.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the application of Kristen L. Smith. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carrie, two to zero. Okay, under nine B, we have, for informational purposes, listing of our open vacancies on boards and commissions.
I have to ask again about the Food Policy Council. I think I ask this every two weeks. I apologize, but why are they open? We have folks working on that.
So we don't.
Could you add that as a note?
What was that?
Just add that as a note, maybe.
Oh, on here?
That they can have, otherwise I'm probably going to ask you again in two weeks.
We'll add it to that.
Thank you.
All right. Next is, on the agenda is item number 10, personnel requisitions. And we have a item 10A, permanent part-time correctional officer for the sheriff's office. And Dawn, any explanations or words of wisdom?
We had corrections officer promote into sheriff's deputy position, so that is what created this vacancy. So it's due to an internal promotion.
Your pleasure, Supervisor McKenna.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carrie, two to zero. Tabled and pending items.
I do have an update, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
With this. I recently met with ECIA and some of their staff members. So they are putting together a proposal, and I anticipate a work session at our next meeting to invite them to come and present a strategic planning concept to the board.
Okay, thank you. All right. We'll move to item 12 on the agenda, which is public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are of concern to that person and which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware that the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries, and Iowa code prohibits the board from deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. So at this time, if you have any public comments for anything not on the agenda, now would be the time to approach the podium. If you do so, please give your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, entertain a motion to recess.
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Dawn. Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have about 20 minutes before our next scheduled work session. So entertain a motion now to recess.
Make a motion to recess until 10:30.
Okay, all in favor, second, all in favor, aye.